I now call the Monday, August 12, 2019, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. At this time, I'd like to ask you to all stand and then invite Chaplain Gary Walker up to lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge by Vice Chair Rankin.
Heavenly Father, we give you all the praise and all the honor and all the glory, Lord, and ask that you be here with us. Thank you for all the many blessings that you give us, Lord, and we just ask that you give wisdom and knowledge to each one of the commissions, Lord, and bless the people who have come tonight and thank you for all of them. Jesus, heavenly grave.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm number four. Roll call. Can we get a roll call, please, Christine?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Here.
Commissioner Musara?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Commissioner Dusky?
Here.
Commissioner Yater?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
Chairperson Zurcher?
And here. I'm number five. Approval minutes from the July 8, 2019, meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I solemnly, Commissioner.
I'll second it.
Motion. It's been moved to second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number six, announcements. Good evening. My name is Matt Zurcher. I'm the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I will be presiding over this evening's deliberations of the commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in advisory capacity to the town council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case. After the commission has initially reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comment, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. It's at this point that I will open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the planning case before the commission. I ask you direct your pertinent comments to the commission through the chairperson and not to the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. I'd also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point, sticking to the facts. Any public comments will be limited to three-minute intervals per person, and you will only be allowed to speak once. Also, this evening, we have some changes on the agenda. Item number seven, public hearing item, ZMC 19-007, and the accompanying action item, which is number three on item number eight, have been pulled at the request of the applicant. So those will not be heard here this evening. And so we only have action items number one and two, item number, under agenda item number eight. And so with that, we will get started. So item number one, RP 19-012, upon the application of Richard Schallman, a request for a reversionary plat to move a common line between lot 934, Prescott Valley Unit 3, and lot 933A, Quad Villas, located on the west side of Duke Drive, approximately 200 feet west of Robert Road. Presenting is Mr. Gary Davis.
[inaudible]
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Gary Davis with Community Development. The proposal is on two lots just west of Robert Road on Duke Drive. Proposal is to modify property line between two lots per an agreement between the two property owners. That concludes my presentation. You have the information in the packet. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions of the commission? All right. Seeing none as the applicant here?
Don't believe so.
All right, so moving on. Any comments from the public? All right, we'll bring it back to the commission for a motion. Is there a motion to approve RP 19-012?
I'll make a motion to approve RP 19-012 by roll call vote.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Aye.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Thank you, Gary. You. Item number two, under action items, is PDP 19-003, upon the application of Todd Maroff, agent, a request for an amended preliminary development plan for two land parcels, approximately .71 acres, located at the northwest corner of Viewpoint Drive and Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, comprising approximately 5,000 square feet of retail space, and two approximately 5.6 acres located at the southwest corner of Viewpoint Drive and Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, comprising approximately 10,400 square feet of office space, 18,000 square feet of retail space, 6,800 square feet for a convenience store and a car wash. Property is zone C2PAD. Presenting this evening is Mr. Joe Scott. Joe?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. You explained the proposed preliminary development plans. History of the zoning, at the September 12, 2005, meeting, the Planning Zone Commission recommended approval. The zoning map changed from RCU 7 to C2PAD, PMPAD, and RSPAD, which was later changed to C3 in 2008. I'm sorry, the zoning map didn't make it in here, but explaining that this was original PDP, and all of this area is C2PAD. There was, again, an area up here that was originally RS, and that was changed to the C3PAD in 2008. Otherwise, all that area shown here is the C2PAD. And that included about 53 acres, again, as shown here. The zoning was approved by ordinance 639 in October of 2005. The preliminary development plan shown here indicates retail, commercial, light, industrial. That was intended and called the North Gate Village Center at the time, with intent to bring forward grocery store, drugstore, restaurants, banks, retailers, and office use. None of these uses have yet been developed at this site. At the time, a traffic impact analysis was performed for the project that included, also included, the approximately 30 acres across the Viewpoint Drive, and that was approved by the town engineer at the time. Since the time recently Robert Hamill, the owner, has acquired various properties at the northeast and southeast corners of Viewpoint Drive and Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, some being excess town right-of-way resulting from the realignment of Viewpoint Drive. North parcels total approximately .71 acres, and the south parcels approximately 5.6 acres. The agent and owner have now requested a amendment to the original preliminary development plan shown here, develop this portion of the property with their devised, revised site layout in the property zone C2. So again, we're just talking about the area here, and it's basically just a, showing a revised layout of some of the uses and buildings that would be allowed in C2. The consistency with the previous plan is the access locations, the first primary access, which is located about 200 feet from the Viewpoint Drive intersection, as required by the town engineer. And also, there would be, for the plan, some future access allowed from the development site into other internal property. So with the approval, the off-site improvements to roadways are required for the town code, and those are addressed as review comment number five in the report, but does require basically off-site, the full improvement of lanes for Viewpoint Drive and also Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, curb grider sidewalk, lane widening, and a bike path. Again, and that would be a requirement of this project if those aren't completed by other, required by other rezoning requirements. As you know, the Antelope Park that was recently approved, if that was to move forward before this, they have requirements for the lane improvements to Viewpoint Drive, and also may be aware that the town and the county are proceeding late this year with adding the additional northbound lane of Viewpoint Drive up to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. So that is being done, but then the other improvements on the east side, again, will be done by this project unless they are completed by another developer before that. So this is the revised plan for this property, again, including uses all allowed in the C2 zoning district. So if only the south, the plan calls for that the southwest corner would develop first, and been told that the north side may be as much as 10 years out. So if only the southwest corner is being developed in the near future, only the off-site half with roadway improvements. A Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and Viewpoint Drive would be required adjacent to the site for this phase, in conjunction with the final development plan. Also, there may be requirements for the traffic signals to be relocated, which would also be part of a final development plan. This exhibit here just shows ultimate lane configurations to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and Viewpoint Drive, and those are additional lanes that would be required. And there's some provision for the widening, to create, to complete the widening, a strip of property may be required from this property and could be on the Long Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and could be traded with the town for property on equal amount of property along Viewpoint Drive. So per Section 1319060 of the town code, no use should be permitted in the PAD district until a preliminary development plan and a final development plan had been reviewed and approved by the commission and council respectively. The preliminary development plan provides the necessary written and graphic information describing general nature of the proposed development and uses allowed on the property. PDPS are approved by the commission as a separate action in conjunction with rezoning, or in this case, as a separate plan that is in conformance with the underlying C2PAD zoning district. This plan has been viewed by Public Works, the town engineer, planning and zoning staff, and is consistent with the town code and allowed uses in the C2PAD district. If the commission finds that the preliminary development plan is consistent with underlying zoning districts and objectives of the general plan, the applicant will then prepare and submit a final development plan for the town council approval. The FDP will provide a more detailed site plan and the required engineering and public improvements to support development of the project in accordance with the town's standards. So with that, staff recommends commission make a motion to approve PDP 1904, subject to the conditions in the brief. And with that, I'm ready for any questions.
All right. Joe, real quick, just want to ask you a few clarifying questions. The original preliminary development plan for this property was approved 14 years ago, correct?
That's correct.
And then we are seeing it again now as an amendment to the original plan because there was a revision to the configuration of where the buildings are located on this specific part of the property, correct?
That's the intent, and also we're just showing that the project will comply with town requirements for off-site improvements.
Okay. Any other questions of the commission?
Could you go to the slide, that one? The access that goes, it looks as though there's an access directly onto Viewpoint Drive. Could you explain that to me so I'm sure I understand what's going on?
I'm sorry, that would be a right-in, right-out only on Viewpoint Drive, and what this doesn't show, this was done previously due to the stated requirements, is that I think the additional lane would be included in this area, but that would be a right, and also according to the recommendations, I think there would be a little deceleration lane coming into this, so traffic can turn off.
So there'd be, on traffic, on Viewpoint Drive going north, there would not be allowed to?
No, there's a median in Viewpoint Drive, so there's no cross-traffic crossing into it, and this would just be a, again, a right-in, right-out, again, with probably a deceleration lane coming into it, and probably a taper going out onto the additional lane.
And if I heard you correctly, Joe, the town is scheduled to start the, adding the northbound lane later this year?
Correct. The northbound lane of Viewpoint Drive up to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway.
And to kind of just go off of what Vice Chair Rankin was saying, so anyone coming from the highway or south of the highway would have to turn on, turn left onto Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and then into this development?
Correct, correct, go with that, and that's, right, and the distance of the 200-foot offset allows for the traffic movement to turn into that lane without stacking up.
Okay. Any other questions of the commission?
I have none. My question.
Ray Carter?
No, I have none.
Okay. All right, Joe, is the applicant here?
I don't know the time. They said they may be running late. I don't see that they are here now.
Okay.
How about that?
Seeing that the applicant's not here, I will open the floor to then public comment. Again, please come up to the, the mic. Please speak into the microphone. If you can, please spell your name for the record. Again, you'll have three minutes, and you'll be allowed to speak once.
My name is Lori Nunley. I'm a new resident here to the Viewpoint area, and I'm about to blow up and explode. I moved here from an ugly area. I'm trying to hold back the tears. I don't want this to be done, and it seems I have no choice. All this was approved before I ever got here. What recourse do I have, other than having the ordinance overturned, period, they're not going to do it? I don't want this to be grown up, and I would imagine, I hope, many of us don't. We don't want a big giant city. If we want a big giant darn city, we'll go south to Phoenix. What can we do? Look at this, I'm a mess over this, you guys, sir, madam. And what can we do? What about the water? Where's all the water going to come from for this? Has anybody thought of that yet?
Real quick, water, water is something that we cannot discuss under our purview. It is a state issue, so it cannot be discussed on planning and zoning.
It can't.
Not.
So who can discuss it?
That's when they go for permits and so forth, they can discuss it at that point in time, but we cannot discuss it here this evening.
So the majority of this was all approved, or began in 2005, correct?
That is correct.
And it was approved and voted, I guess, by the people in 2013? So I have no recourse other than to move, correct? Pretty much, sort of, kinda?
Not a whole lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you spell your name, please?
Lori, L-O-R-R-I-E, last name Nunley, and like Nancy, U-N-L-E-Y.
Hi, my name is Isabel Ceredes, spelled I-S-A-B-E-L, last name spelled C-E-R-E-C-E-D-E-S. Thank you for taking my comment today, Mr. Commissioners and Mrs. Commissioner. I just want to state that I believe that this amendment is just settling for whatever it can get without, without any consideration for the local residents. I understand the underlying zoning and that the owner has the right to develop his property. However, the original pad called for a large-scale grocery store, not a convenience store. Convenience stores and those with gas stations and car washes, they do and will diminish residential property values significantly, and people, many of whom are non-residents, will be quickly driving in and out, buying beer, cigarettes, lottery tickets, and leaving a mess at the car wash, and will have panhandlers, and this is really outside of the character of Viewpoint and Pronghorn, if you've been in that area. And as you know, we already have a convenience store just across the freeway. I don't believe we need another convenience store. There's also the issue of safety, because there's going to be a very heavy amount of external and rapid traffic coming from outside the area, and it's really going to increase. And as you know, there's already an emergency exit issue in Viewpoint, because we really only have one way out, and until the roads are built, this is really a significant issue for the people of Viewpoint. I believe that there's more value added with the original pad for a large-scale grocery store, and I would argue that the convenience store doesn't meet the objectives of the general plan, and it doesn't meet the needs of the Prescott Valley North community once it's built out. Many who live in Viewpoint and Pronghorn are on fixed incomes and were retired, and just having another high-priced convenience store is really not going to serve the needs of the community. Moving forward, will just create a mismatch of unwanted convenience stores that doesn't really fit into the future of this area, because I'm assuming that there's more homes that are going to be built in that area, and eventually, we are going to need a large-scale grocery store. So I just want to stress again that this is going to really lower our property values. And as a Viewpoint resident, we have already suffered a developer who just got up and left and didn't finish our development, and I'm hoping there's more thought that's put into this, and that there's future thought that's going in there, because we're really going to need some sort of a large-scale grocery store in that area. So with that, I ask that commissioners reject the amended proposal, PDP 19003, and continue with the original pad. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Paula Burr. First of all, I'd like to note that the only reason that we're having the chance to speak here today is because a citizen requested that there be comments after this. Normally, this would have just been for a discussion among the commissioners, and the public would not have had an ability to speak, because it was an action item. So thank you very much, Isabel, for requesting us to have some say in this. I understand that this isn't a change in zoning. I understand that this is normally the manner that this has been handled in the past, but I don't believe that this procedure is supported by the town code, specifically Article 13-19-60, Section N, under Plans Required in Pad Procedures. Section N states that once a final development plan for a pad has been approved by the council, it can be amended, changed, or modified only through the procedures prescribed for the application approval. When this pad went through its application approval, much more than a traffic flow consideration was looked at. The commission was required to determine, for example, if the proposed project will constitute an environment of sustained desirability and stability, and that it will be in harmony with the character of the surrounding development. The building of a convenience store in a car wash is not only not in harmony with the surrounding area, it's in direct competition with the main focus of the PAD that was approved. As stated in the staff report, the intent of the North Gate Village Center, which was the name of the PAD which was approved in 2005, the developer was planning to bring forward a large-scale grocery store, followed by a drugstore, restaurants, retailers, et cetera. In fact, it was the first condition under Section 2 of the ordinance that approved the zoning change for the PAD, that the original pad development, which shows the grocery store, was what was to be developed. That was the first condition on the ordinance. A convenience store at this location, especially one developed by the owner of the convenience store on the opposite corner, seems more of an attempt to stave off competition than to add any real value to our community, and it does not comply with the original nature of the original PAD. The town had the foresight to see that a grocery store at this location made sense, given the planned growth in the area, the growth they were looking for. That's why they approved the planned area development in the first place.
Time's expired. Thank you for your comments.
You're really not going to give me any more time?
No, we don't do that here, sir.
But can he read the rest of my statement, then? You're really going to do that? That makes sense to you, to have this gentleman finish my two minutes?
We can do that.
Thank you very much.
That's...
The intent of the PAD is for the area to be developed in a cohesive, consistent manner, not the hodgepodge development that we see on Highway 69. This increases the attractiveness and desirability of the area that surrounds the PAD and gives the town more control over their commercial development. Deviating from that plan without a thorough review of the entire nature and character of the PAD, not just the traffic implications or the underlying zoning, makes a mockery of the PAD process and does a disservice to the residents in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead and bring the mic down, ma'am.
Okay, can, here.
Thank you.
I came here in 1999. I've seen a lot of changes. I've attended a lot of your planning and zoning. Unfortunately, as I've aged, I've not attended as many of them, and now I'm pretty angry at myself that I haven't, because decisions that got made 14 years ago, and now you're using to justify changes that we don't feel are particularly appropriate for our community are being made. As you were doing this, I did not realize, I knew you came in through Viewpoint and Pronghorn Drive, I expected that. What I didn't see until it was pointed out is that you're going to have the limited access in and out further down the road, closer to the intersection, that, I don't know what you call it, right up there, I'm looking right at that area. I don't know who else uses those roads, but I use it daily going across there, and I run into, we all run into a traffic problem across the road for that entrance that's so close to the highway, goes into the convenience store area there. You do have constant, there's lots of minor accidents. I did not bring that information with me, but you have, have it there, and it's, I never know when somebody's going to decide to make a turn, they don't give you much notice. It's, it's a problem area there. You are now inviting us to have that problem area further up on, on Viewpoint Drive, and I just don't understand why, why anybody wants, I, I hear you saying so they won't back up. Well, it's not a matter of them backing up, they just decide willy-nilly to make those turns suddenly, and I think if they're going to have egress and ingress there, it should only be at Viewpoint and Pronghorn Ranch, not with the, the side piece. I do believe that we were given, we were told that we would have a grocery store, which would be wonderful, another convenience store. I'm older now, I'm, I'm on the one where I'm looking at the prices, and the prices are much different at a convenience store. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Pierce, spelled P-I-E-R-C-E.
Go ahead and speak into the mic, sir.
Excuse me. Sorry, did you hear me? Okay. My wife and I moved to Viewpoint because of the ruralness of the area and the open spaces, and if this development goes through, it's going to have a big... spaces, and if this development goes through, it's going to have a big negative impact on my quality of life. We don't need another car wash. There's two of them on Highway 69, another one being built right next to Maverick on Glassford Hill Road. We have a good convenience store in Roberts Market, we don't need another one of those either. And I come from places where convenience stores breed crime. Now, I agree with this lady here, who is almost in tears, but I'm a Marine, we don't cry, we get angry and we take action. And personally, if this goes through, I'm going to start a movement at Viewpoint, and I hope there's someone here from Pronghorn who will do the same thing, to boycott every business in that development. Thank you for your time.
My name is Craig Kiggins, K-I-G-G-E-N-S, and this will be an exercise in futility. The lady asked where the water's coming from. I don't care where it comes from, because I live downstream. Last spring, I had a river through my backyard. It was probably 100 yards wide and two feet deep, with a running current down the middle, took out about 400 feet of my horse fencing. Every time you cover up ground with asphalt, you're directing more water at my place. And I don't think anybody cares, I don't think anybody keeps track of that, but one of these days, my house is floating down the creek. And I wish you people would pay attention to the floodwaters, nobody's retaining floodwaters, they make feeble attempts at it, but it's not doing, it's not doing the job. And I just want to be on record as saying, people are suffering downstream.
Anybody else?
I'm starting to hear, my name is Mary, M-A-R-Y.
Need you to speak into the mic, ma'am.
Oh, never done this before. Mary Sparks, S-P-A-R-K-S. I do have a background as a commercial real estate appraiser, MAI, from San Francisco, so I know a little bit, not a lot. One thing I think that is very incorrect is that planning and zoning has not considered the overall environmental impact of the amount of traffic being generated on Glassford Hill to get to a grocery store, or 89A to get to the other fries store. I think that's a significant issue for a town as lovely as ours and Prescott. There's a lot more gas and auto fumes being used unnecessarily by this bedroom community for people to simply go to the grocery store. And we do need a grocery store. I so hope you change from the silly little convenience store, which we don't need, to a grocery store, which we desperately need as the community continues to grow. I don't have the numbers on the proposed buildout at the farther end of Antelope Meadows Drive, but there are a great number of houses going in there, and there's also innumerable homes already developed in Pronghorn and Viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and/or motion. Any other discussion? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just wonder about a comment here. You know, most developers need an anchor store when they're doing these developments, and I'm assuming that originally this grocery store was this man's anchor. And I am not going ahead with it, I have to assume that the reason for it is the reason that we can't get one down on 69 and a lot of other places, that the grocery stores don't want to go in there, because the volume just isn't there for them, so therefore, they're not going to build. I can't imagine this guy would want to make a change to this plan and lose his anchor if he didn't have to. So we can talk all we want to about, we need a grocery store there, and we want a grocery store there, but I haven't heard anybody yet say, where are we going to get a grocery store to go there? And I have to assume this guy has tried.
It's a different owner.
Pardon me?
It's a different owner.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, that's enough.
It really doesn't matter, because the story would be the same. It's very difficult to get these large stores to commit to these local areas like this. And while it'd be nice to have a grocery store there, I bet you 10 to 1, nobody here can find one that'll go in. I'm sorry.
Other comments?
I'd like to hear that comment, please. She says they have one.
They have, they've looked.
I have a comment.
Okay, no comments, please, from the audience, we've had that chance.
I would love to have a Costco in PB, and I've talked to Costco about it. And I have been told that Costco has a good neighbor policy, that they have done surveys in Prescott Valley, and the volume here would not be adequate to support a Costco without putting other businesses out of business in Prescott Valley.
Folks, please...
Therefore, they're not coming in, and I'm sure that this developer would much prefer to have a good anchor than what he's putting in. But the market will take care of that in time. When there's a volume for a grocery store to want to come in, they will be here.
Any other comments?
No.
All right. At this point in time, I'll ask for a motion to approve PDP 19J-004, subject to the conditions? 003, my apologies, apologies, it's actually 004 in the agenda, so, other part of the agenda, so PDP 19-003. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve PDP 19-003, subject to the conditions provided.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
No.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yager?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
All right. Moving on to item number nine, call to public, consideration to discussion and comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission do not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Anyone wish to address the commission? That is correct, that's what public is for.
Again, my name is Paula Burr. I'm, feel concerned that two of the commissioners don't, I've spent about two days studying this, and the person who is planning to develop this corner down here is not the owner of the rest of the property. So he's not looking for an anchor store for a grocery. His goal, he owns Robert Market across, his goal is probably to eliminate the competition, and he doesn't want a grocery store there. So he has not been searching for a grocery store, he's just interested in his little part of the development. We have to look farther down the road. If, if there isn't a market for a grocery store now, there will be once Jasper's developed, once Granite Dells Estates is developed, once all the county land west of Viewpoint is developed, there will be a need for a grocery store. But instead, we'll have a convenience store that is just going to be distracting from a real grocery store coming in there. So I would hope that the commissioners would be studying these things a little bit more than just a citizen who spent a couple days on it. To not know who the owner of the property is is troubling for me as a citizen.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'll go to adjournment of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.